Apologies for the late start. We are going to call the Board of Education business meeting to order on August 14th. Supposed to be at 7:30, we're at 7:39. Ms. Zenzky, roll call, please.
Here.
Dr. Harrigan.
Here.
Ms. Ferragini.
Ms. Rosenberg.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is audience participation. If anybody would like to go to the microphone, please state your name and address. Seeing nobody at the mic, we're going to move on to item number three, consent calendar. And it looks like we will need a motion to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Grippo?
Move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the consent calendar as presented.
Second, Dr. Harrigan. There's no public comment for this consent calendar, so we're going to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, unanimous. Thank you. Moving along to committee reports. First committee up would be curriculum. Ms. Cullen is currently unavailable as she is attending an event at Bon Sackett. Therefore, if I can pass this over to Ms. Slano.
Thank you very much. I'll review the minutes from the June 9th Curriculum Committee meeting. At that meeting, we discussed an out-of-country field trip, which I'll be asking for the board to vote on this evening. The field trip is being led by Katie Aparowski and Josephine Countryman. They shared details of the trip. They'll be going to Milan, or taking our students to Milan, Cinque Terre, Florence, Rome, and Sorrento. The cost of the trip is just over $5,000. The trip is being, the tour guide company is called EF Tours. They would be leaving from New York City on day one, and they would be returning on day 11. Looks like they will be spending three days in Rome, three days in Sorrento, and starting off the trip in Milan. The, there's global travel protection that parents can buy in addition to the, on this trip. And what was up for discussion was making sure that we look at the travel advisories for the area in which our students are traveling. And right now, Italy is on the same travel advisory as France, Portugal, the UK, Germany, Sweden, Denmark, the Netherlands, and the Bahamas, which is a yellow travel advisory. So it's not in the blue, but it is in the yellow, and we'll continue to watch that closely. The next item on our agenda were some informational items. And the first one up was that Jillian Pocket, who is our K-12 Art Department Chair, was there to represent the art teachers and talk about the curriculum review that they had concluded with and presented to the Cheshire Curriculum Council, which is made up of teachers from all aspects of K through 12. They talked about the art department emphasizing academic choice. They talked about how they responded to students' needs within the art room. And they talked about updating some of their curriculum guides, continuing to publicize their curriculum to all stakeholders. And they also talked about many, about how they were emphasizing real-world experiences for students to take on the roles of artists that, and that artists have in the real world. Next up was another K-12 summary of the Music Department five-year review. And Nicole Kleagle, who is our K-12 Music Department Chair, led that effort. She really talked about, as did our Art Department Chair, talked about the surveys that they sent out to parents and students and teachers, talked about the updates that they want to make in the curriculum. And in this role of the five-year review, the teachers talk about their five-year goals, and that sets the work of that department for the next five years. So they talked about growing a music technology pathway, as that is something that is the wave of the future. They've talked about providing department-wide professional development, including teachers observing other teachers. Often, the art teacher might be the only art teacher in the building, and so providing opportunities for them to go watch other art teachers in other buildings was, was something that they wanted to prioritize. Next up, I gave an overview of the early admission to kindergarten and the transition kindergarten program. I talked about the status of that, whereas the previous year, we had 31 families petition for early admission to kindergarten. After the screenings, 12 were admitted. This year, 25 families petitioned for early admission to kindergarten, and eight students were admitted early to kindergarten. For the 25-26 school year, this one that's upcoming, we'll have two transition K programs, and this will be the last year that transition kindergarten is offered. You'll remember that this was put into place to support families who might be struggling with the law going into place without having much time to prepare financially. So this is something that has helped us bridge the gap. Lastly, we talked about the preliminary Safe School Climate Survey results that were administered in April to students, parents, and teachers. We gave an overview of the initial parent results, but overall, we felt that we wanted a larger participation from families. And at that Curriculum Committee meeting, we discussed re-administering the survey in October, and perhaps doing it during parent conferences, so that while, while parents were in the building, they could either scan their QR code with their phone, or that we could have Chromebooks available for them to answer the survey right there. So I think our entire team is behind getting some real-time information on that. And then we adjourned. Any questions? Tim?
So you said this is the last year that we're doing the transitional kindergarten program?
Yes.
It originally started out as one year, and then it went to two years. How do we know, why do you say that this is the last year? And I can envision a few different reasons as to why it would need to be, but I'm just curious why you say it will be the last year?
Well, we believe that they've had a number of years to really understand the law, and preschools have had a chance to catch up with that. The communications have gone out, both from our offices and all of the preschools. Families have gotten, gotten accustomed to that. But also, we'll be moving to the new schools the following year, and so that wasn't something that we ever anticipated being part of that building plan.
Okay, that all makes sense to me. The other thing that goes through my mind is our, our current teacher body, which is with student enrollment increasing, will they, is the expectation right now that 12 months from now, they'll be transitioning back into the K through 12 program?
Yes, that's, that's the plan. They originally were teachers who were teaching kindergarten.
Yeah.
And we were able to reallocate them there. They knew that it was only for a year. They were very amenable to, to the two years, but they're also, you know, looking forward to getting back to kindergarten.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Grippo?
Hi, Marlene.
Hi, Adam.
Nice to see you.
You as well.
The school climate survey?
Yes.
So I think we, this is an issue we had been discussing for a few months, but so the reason you felt the, the parent responses are skewed is because there were just so few of them? Or was it that they were overly positive or overly negative, or all of the above?
No. We want more parent responses. And it was after, maybe it was the time of year, maybe it was being that it was after April vacation, and there were a lot of end-of-year activities, field trips to be signed, things like that. So we thought if, if we had it and offered it, we'll still send it out the same way, but we'll, in addition to that, we'll hit, hit it harder during parent conferences. When you're waiting around to meet with your teacher while the other family is in there, it's really easy, you have your phone with you, to scan a QR code and complete it. When we've done that in the past, I know as principal at Chapman, if we had a survey, we, you know, we wanted to get some input on parents, that gave us really good volume of responses.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to add. These microphones are a little far away. I feel like I'm leaning in.
I'm not leaning in, though.
No, it's picking you up.
Is it picking me up? Okay, good.
I think the genesis of that, and thank you, Ms. Slano, for having a deeper conversation during the Curriculum Committee, because we, you're right, Mr. Grippo, we did speak about it. I think the sample size was too small, and we all decided that maybe, you know, giving it another go-around, so that we can have a more reliable dataset would be helpful. And giving parents the opportunity to have different access points to it, too, so.
Yeah.
Just real quickly, use EF.
EF Tours?
Yeah, that's a pretty standard company.
It is. We've used them for a number of other trips as well. I would, I would let the board know that we do need to, I would hope that you would vote on that tonight, so that when school starts next week, our two teachers can begin to share that information with students.
Absolutely.
Should you approve?
I think Mr. Grippo has a question on that, though.
Okay.
Just leave it.
No, I was, I was hoping it would just turn on when I started speaking. It was super fancy, but no, it's not. For the, for the trip, is that, I'm assuming that's an upperclassman trip?
I think it is offered to both the Italian and Latin classes. I don't think you have to have reached a certain language acquisition in order to go.
Oh, okay.
Any questions?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready, unless Mr. Grippo or Mr. White has a follow-up.
The climate survey, thank you for working to get a bigger response. Thinking also to open a house might be another, just as a reminder. But then, in doing that, and reaching out specifically to parents who come to parent-teacher conferences, I just wonder if we end up skewing it more toward engaged parents and less toward less-engaged parents? And the, the correlation I'm drawing on that is absenteeism, which is a big concern, I think. And so I just wanted to highlight that as a possibility. Again, I don't, I don't want to, I totally, I totally believe you're doing everything that you can, but I just wanted to point that out, so if there is anything that comes to mind where you might be able to.
Well, you're making me think that maybe we actually send a paper with the QR code home. We, we send newsletters, but this would maybe reach someone who didn't check their email all the time, or doesn't read the newsletters. I don't know, maybe, well, I'll bring that back to the Safe School Climate Committee, and we'll see if we can't think of some other ways to engage.
Yeah, but my basic.
The unengaged.
My basic point is just that I believe, unless you say otherwise, the last couple of years absenteeism has been, has been a significant concern in Cheshire as well statewide. And just to have a brief discussion on that, any possibilities of going down that path?
We have made improvements in that.
Anything we could do. I mean, we certainly, as Marlene was just saying, dramatically improved our chronic absenteeism better than the rest of the state has improved theirs. But I, the other variable that I am sensitive to for, like, October is, you know, if you just started in that school, like, having been the principal at DOD and assistant principal, it's like, you've been here a month, you know? We also want experienced feedback, like, to be able to have that be a little bit more valid. So balancing all those variables and ensuring we get quality feedback is something that we're definitely deliberating, and how do we best do that? And asking PTO in the fall, and really trying to get some other ideas, whether we incentivize it, or actually hard copy mail at home, or we'll figure something out to try and ensure better response, because we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to provide the best climate possible. So you don't do that without getting good data in. So, thank you.
Anything else? Dr. Harrigan, if you can please read the motion.
Sure. I'll make a motion that the Cheshire Board of Education approved the participation of Cheshire High School students in the educational field trip to Italy from April 3rd through the 13th of 2026.
Second, Mr. Grippo, discussion? Any public comment with the motion? Yes, ma'am. Do you mind just going to the microphone so we can capture it? Thank you.
I believe the question was, who's paying the, the cost of the trip?
That's correct.
So this, this would be the families. The, the Board of Education is not paying for that trip. That being said, it is an expense, and I know that some, some students save up money over the summer to go on these types of trips. Other times, once the teachers know who's interested in taking the trip, we'll talk to students about fundraising opportunities.
That's very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the question. We will now vote on the motion that is on the floor. All those in favor of the recommended motion, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next committee will be finance, Dr. Harrigan and Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. So included in our packets tonight is the financial report for the 2025-26 Board of Education budget, reflecting expenditures and encumbrances through July 31st, 2025. So that's a whole month of the first of our fiscal year. The approved budget for fiscal year 25-26 is $93,124,314. And as of, I think as of the end of July, $17,786,660, or just, just slightly over 19% is encumbered and expended. And as we know, the bulk of the encumbrances for the larger accounts being payroll, transportation. Those have not yet been encumbered, and the September and October financial report will include those encumbrances and more accurately reflect the full year financial picture. So at this time, there are no variance concerns, and I'll hand it off to Ms. Emily Taylor to add anything if she needs to about this first month of encumbrances, but also to talk about the energy price locks and the Medical Benefits Fund.
Thanks, Ann, and good evening, everyone. So to add on to Dr. Harrigan, we did lock our energy prices for this year, and we had some pretty favorable pricing for our big commodities. So you can see this year compared to last year, especially heating oil, transportation for both diesel and gasoline, we actually had a savings from the prior year. We are locked in for the amount and now locked in for the price for the upcoming year. We don't, we have not locked in for propane yet. That will probably be in October, and same with electricity. And then for natural gas, we just purchase at ever-source market rates. And just to reiterate, we don't have any variance concerns for the budget, but it is early, so you'll see more, a more accurate reflection of some of those bigger budget categories in September and October. So we, we tend to encumber all of our salaries for the year, so when you're seeing something like 9.3 or 45%, that's not going, that's going to change quite drastically when we are in the fall. So the other piece that, for medical benefits, I'm actually going to jump backwards and go to June and close out medical benefits. But for this year, July is not yet available for the report, so I'll report on that next board meeting. But our Medical Benefits Fund budget for this fiscal year is almost $16 million. We're going to be contributing more than we contributed last year, about $1.2 million, and that's an increase of about $100,000 a month from the prior fiscal year. And the balance, the starting balance for this fiscal year is $2.6 million. And with that, I'm going to go backwards and close out last fiscal year's medical benefits report. And also, if you want a more detailed, obviously with the, kept everything the same, the fiscal, we have all of the account descriptions, and once I do the medical benefits report, I can take questions on either the medical benefits report or the financial report. So closing out last fiscal year for medical benefits, I am happy to announce that we actually ended up with 2.25 claim months in reserve. We ended up $330,000 over where we started last July, and we had a pretty good claims month in June of 2025. You see, it's just over $1 million, which was less claims than the previous two months. So our starting balance for this fiscal year is the 2.6, because that was our closing balance from the prior fiscal, fiscal year. And with that said, we do have a potential stop-loss reimbursement coming in as well. So that's, we did have more stop-loss reimbursements than the prior year. You see, we have $764,000, and we had more rebates, prescription rebates. So with that said, I'll take any questions that people have.
Hello, welcome to the dais.
Thank you so much, officially.
Yeah. The stop-loss, will that be, I guess that would be recognized in the July report?
Yes. Yeah, and it's still being trued up, so I'm not sure that it'll be in the July report. There's still some back and forth, but it would be recognized in this fiscal year. Yes.
Thanks.
Can you just go back? What's the, any specific item for the, the 2-point million increase that you mentioned earlier?
For the monthly, monthly increase? That's just reflecting the additional costs for the insurance plan, to make sure we're covering our, our portion aligned with, like, the employee co-share. It's just more expensive, and we have budgeted more, so we want to make sure that we're adding more to the fund accordingly, anticipating those increases.
Thank you. Ms. White, did you have a question? Great. That's it for medical benefits. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
She wants to ask a question. May I ask a question?
I think so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the mic might be best, so that we can capture your question for those watching at home, right at the podium. Thank you. If you could just state your name and address, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Dee Flanagan. I was wondering whether on the medical insurance, whether that was sent out for bid, for competitive bids? And I was wondering if you could give me some information about that.
Yeah, it was not sent out for bid this year. We work with an insurance broker. We believe that we have a good rate. We work with Cigna currently, so it was not out for bid this year.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else in finance, Dr. Harrigan?
That is all I have.
That's all you have, Emily? That's all I have? Yeah, we're good. Awesome. Next committee would be personnel. Mr. White, do you want to just cover this? You are part of the Personnel Committee?
Yeah.
We had a meeting, and I wasn't, I wasn't preparing for this, so what was the, it was a contract, I think.
July 8th meeting.
July 8th meeting, okay.
The superintendent's evaluation process.
That I distinctly remember. So we covered two topics, which was the Parrot Educators Union Contract. Is that?
No, this one was the July 8th meeting, where we talked about my evaluation process. And basically, we decided in that meeting to facilitate a retreat with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, to work with the board to identify goals, to support my evaluation. So part of the discussion that night was about that retreat and how we were going to schedule that, and then the second, and what the structure of that would be. The second part of that evening was a conversation about how that would then translate to what my, the superintendent's evaluation would look like. Trying, I think we tried to keep away from, like, Jeff personal, like, any superintendent's evaluation that might work in the Cheshire Public Schools, what would that look like? And started to, to figure that out. And then there's going to be another report later on the retreat, that we actually had to do all that stuff, so.
What meeting was it? Didn't the, didn't the Paris come in for?
That was the June, we did have a special meeting on that on July 30th, where we approved the par contract, so you're definitely not crazy.
That was Personnel.
And when we, when we appointed, officially appointed Emily that night. We've had a variety of Personnel meetings.
And I do remember, I do remember you're discussing your evaluation.
More than a month ago at this point.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I apologize for not coming prepared for it. But yeah, that, that is basically what I recall for the last few meetings this summer for Personnel. Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
Thank you. That's Personnel. Then we move on to planning, which is what Mr. White's been waiting for, the update on our energy performance contract. Ms. Taylor? Or should we invite Mr. Masianna to the podium? I believe so. Let's, let's have her start.
Thank you and good evening. So on tonight's agenda, there is the approval of educational specifications, which is the second item under planning, but that is the purpose of the presentation that I'm going to walk through, and I'll try and do this quickly. I do know Mr. White sent some questions, so I'll try and address those as we go through this presentation, and then I'll certainly entertain any questions. The presentation that you see is a presentation that was made Tuesday night to the Cheshire Town Council, and I'm going to ask Dr. Solan, who's navigating, to go to page three. And as he does that, what I want to explain is, the, the board is certainly aware that we've been working to get an energy performance contract in place. This is initiative that started with planning in October of 2023. So, you know, we, we've come a long way since then, and we are at a critical stage now. What we're trying to do at this point is, we had to split the Energy Performance Contract Initiative in half. And the reason for that is there are some significant tax credits that are going to be expiring now that the one beautiful Bill Act has been passed. It eliminates some of the Inflation Reduction Act tax credits. So on this particular screen, and you really can't see the whole thing over to the right, but what we're trying to accomplish at this time, thanks, Jeff, that's perfect. We're intending to install a fuel cell at Cheshire High School and photovoltaic electric generation, which are solar arrays, at six of our schools. This chart, I know it's a little bit of an eye-burner, but there's a couple of important pieces. That column that says hard costs, this is about $19.5 million worth of project work that would get completed in this phase. If you look over to the right, there's overhead and profit, there's fees from Energia. So the total cost of this phase is $23.4 million. And then the next two columns are very critical. There's $6.6 million of rebates and school construction grants that we would receive, and that's why we have the ed specs on the agenda for this evening, because in order to apply for a school construction grant, the board has to approve the ed specs. That next column, estimated IRA benefit, again, IRA stands for Inflation Reduction Act, that $4.6 million of benefit expires if we don't complete this portion of the initiative by September and have part of the construction completed by December of this year. We can accomplish all that as long as we continue to move on the timeline that I'm going to show you here in a minute. So again, the, the initiative here has been expedited, because we don't want to lose that IRA benefit. And so that last column, the net total, is the difference between the cost of the project, $23.4 million. If you subtract out the rebate and the tax credit benefit, we would install the solar and the fuel cell at a net cost of $12 million. Now, we'll be saving about $1 million a year in energy if we complete that work over 20 years. So there are savings that exceed the total cost when we do the financing. There's a lot of other detail I'm leaving out, but I'm trying to give you the top line. Jeff, if you go back one slide, and I'll show you the timeline that we're working with here. So we, we signed our agreement with Johnson Controls, and the town council approved it in May. And we started in earnest on this initiative to try and get these items And we started in earnest on this initiative to try and get these items fast-tracked in July. You'll see that there are a series of steps that we have completed successfully. The, where it says we are here, contract approval, that was presented to the town council on Tuesday evening, August 12th. They did approve the contract to go forward. It's a very extensive contract. I will tell you that we're still negotiating some of the terms back and forth with Johnson Controls. Our town attorney has done our review. There were just some minor changes that were requested from Johnson Controls. I did get late, late this afternoon, Johnson Controls revised contract. It looks pretty good to me, so we're still working through those details. And I don't expect that to be a showstopper at all. So the next two items are the only things I want to point out. By August 27th, we have to submit an application. The acronym there is NRES. It's, help me out, Tim, it's non-residential energy savings. It's a program that, in this case, would give us about $5 million worth of benefit. And then NTP for construction, that is the notice to proceed to Johnson Controls to begin actual construction of the solar and fuel cell project. So tight timeframe, but I'm happy to say that with the council's approval of the contract August 12th, we can make this happen. If you. Yes, it was. Jeff, if you go forward now, two slides. And I know that the board members, you have this presentation in your package, but just at a very high level, this con, the contract highlights, as I mentioned, there'll be guaranteed savings of a million. The most important thing to understand about what we're about to embark on, assuming this gets all the necessary approvals, is Johnson Controls is representing that we'll save $1,085,300 per year. And those savings come from, savings from our utility that we're not buying electricity, but they also come from the credits that are from the NRES program. If we fall short of that $1,085,000 in utility savings, Johnson Controls writes us a check to make up the difference every year. So that's why, that's one of the big advantages of entering into this energy performance contract is that guarantee. And by the way, we will probably never write a, Johnson Controls will never write a check to make up that guarantee because they're going to build this solar and fuel cell and make sure that financially they, we will achieve those savings. I didn't mention it, but I just want to remind the board that we are not working on this alone with Johnson Controls. Energia is our owner's representative. Everything that Johnson Controls has presented is being validated by Energia, including the details of the rooftop solar to make sure that the schools have sufficient structural support when we add rooftop solar. So I'll pause there because I see there is a question, if that's okay?
Thank you, yeah. Just with regard to the guaranteed savings that you were mentioning, has the town engaged in a performance contract like this before? This is really to give comfort to people who are saying, that's just crazy, this wouldn't work. But I think.
That's a great leading question. Thank you, Mr. White.
Do we have 10 years of experience with a contract of this nature?
Yes, so that's why we call this initiative EPC 2.0 is what, what it's been dubbed. But we did a contract 10 years ago with Amoresco that we are continuing to achieve the savings that were guaranteed by Amoresco. So, you know, Johnson Controls and Energia as our owner's rep, they have vast experience with these type of energy performance contracts. So once, again, assuming this gets approved and we get everything done, you know, I do certainly expect that we'll achieve those savings. But we have the guarantee in case they're not achieved.
Thanks, Finn. You had just begun talking about all of these solar panels are going on rooftops. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm going to show you where exactly.
And that assumes then, my next question, which is, all of our roofs have been recently, recently enough worked on so that they're.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question.
And then really my question is, so how long do we expect to, to have solar panels on, on our roofs?
What's it, at least 20 years would be the life expectancy.
And our, and our roofs are 20 years ready?
Yes, so all the solar that's been recommended, has been recommended on the basis that we're only putting solar on roofs that are warranted and that will have the 20-year life. That is certainly a significant portion of the review that gets done. Johnson Controls has made the recommendations and the blue that, these are, these are, this is Cheshire High School. The blue that you see are the proposed placement of the solar panels. If you look at this, the lower left corner, it's kind of a, you know, like a plush shape solar array. That is an example, is the West Gym. We installed, that's a 30-year guaranteed roof system. It's, it's probably in our eighth or ninth year, I believe. So the placement of the solar is there specifically on those sections of roof that we still have warranty. If you, if we just flip through the next one, I'll go through these quickly. Dodd Middle School, we, we did all the roofs, so we see that most of Dodd's roof system is covered by solar. Keep going, Jeff. Highland has not only rooftop solar, but where Dr. Solan is, has his cursor, that's a proposed carport to add additional, you know, energy or electricity savings by installing solar. And if you flip one more.
You can see actually right behind that area, this is the Cheshire Police Department with their existing solar carport.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask, actually.
That's actually a really good location for a carport for Highland. This is Doolittle. We would install new roof on Doolittle. Just flip two more. The next one is Barnum. And flip one more slide because this, what's being proposed for Barnum, this is the roof structure. If you flip back one slide, Jeff, there's also a proposal for solar carport in the parking lot. Now, I, again, to give you a little bit more detail, we did present the proposed solar at the new schools to the school building committee and let them know, you know, not only what are the, the financial advantages, but this is where the locations, you know, of the proposed solar would go. And the school building committee did express some concern about, we don't want to make the building unsightly, you know, by adding solar panels in certain locations. So we're working, the point is, we're working with the school building committee as well. There is a balance to strike because the more solar we put on, the more energy savings that we'll have. The, if we include the solar carport at Barnum, there will be enough solar energy or solar energy that's created to fully offset the electricity needs. One of the questions Mr. White had is, if we have excess solar at these sites, can we use it as a credit to other school or town buildings? And the answer is, we absolutely can because of the way it's going to be metered. So, you know, if we generate more electricity than we need, we can use it to offset other buildings across the town. If you flip one more is Norton El, Norton Elementary School, same thing. I will add that an important characteristic of the two new schools is when they were designed and the, and the construction budget contains all the infrastructure that's needed to connect solar. So in the school budget already are all the electrical wiring, a utility room, a utility panel to support solar. What wasn't included in the new schools budget, because it wasn't affordable at the time, was the actual purchase of the solar arrays. So because that infrastructure is already built into the new schools budget, it will reduce our cost of installing solar. We just basically have to buy the panels and, and the mounting structure for the roofs. And these designs were designed originally by the mechanical engineer for the new schools. So we didn't even have to do all that design work. This last slide, at Cheshire High School, the proposal is to add a natural gas fuel cell that will create electricity. And again, there's a significant financial incentive to do that. So if you flip to the next slide, I'm going to just kind of talk through, one more, Jeff, I'm sorry. This slide is, is an eye burner, but if I start at the left, I'm just going to highlight a couple of columns. That left column is the verified guaranteed savings, 24.5 million. Of that 24.5 million, 19 million, I'll just get you the closer down, 19.2 million is what we would be saving by not buying electricity for those schools. And 5.29 million of that is the, the non-residential energy savings credits that we would get, you know, through, through that program. So that's how we get to the 24 million. The gross savings is a total of 35 million. That includes $6 million of state aid and the 4.7 million dollars of investment tax credit. And if you take that 35 million, minus the total annual cost of 31.9 million, you'll see all the way over to the right, we actually will have 3.5 million of what is being called excess cash flow. So every year, under this program, for this particular installation of solar and fuel cells, we're going to generate savings over and above our costs of about 180,000 a year. And over 20 years, it's 3.5 million. So what are we going to do with that 3.5 million? What we are going to do is use that excess cash flow to do some important projects that we've included in our capital budget. For example, air conditioning, Doolittle Elementary School was one of the projects that we had. Replacing the windows at Doolittle was another project. So that 3.5 million is not coming back into our pocket is the goal. The goal is to use that to do additional infrastructure work that is funded from the savings from adding solar and fuel cells. So as I said earlier, we're splitting the energy performance contract. We fast, we're fast-tracking the solar and fuel cell, but we have additional work that we will do. That study is being completed by October. We will know what that additional work will be and what we can afford. We have been working with the working group that was appointed for the energy performance contract, which Mr. White is a member of, along with Fiona Pearson from the town council and Chris Smith from the Energy Commission, as well as myself and, and internal staff from the school and the town. So that's the long and short of it. Kind of, you know, taking this forward, what's in your packet for approval tonight are the ed specs for each of the six schools where we'll be doing either solar or solar and a fuel cell. So with that, I'll pause because that's the end of the presentation and be glad to take questions and try to answer them all.
I think we have a list to my left.
Yes, I know. I saw, I saw something earlier.
Thank you, thank you so much, Finn. Super appreciate all the work that you're putting into this. And just a little bit of a backdrop, I think it was a year and a half ago, Jeff, your budget, you came to us and your primary, I think you gave us three concerns, but probably the single biggest one was energy prices, global energy prices. So just as a reminder to people, I mean, this is part of where I'm coming from, which is budgetary stability. It's not, I, I would love to have cost reductions all the time where possible, but even just achieving stability, I think is a great thing. And one of the nice things about renewables is that it provides stability because we're, we're not forced to buy fossil fuels on the open market when Putin starts a war with Ukraine and the price of natural gas goes through the roof. I mean, we all saw it in our electric bills where the rates, the supply rate, I think, went up 50% or something like that. So that, that is part of my thinking in going down this road. With that, a couple of questions. And I don't want, I, I have no interest in slowing anything down, but I do have a couple of questions. The, the fuel cell, does that, does that get virtual net metering?
Yes.
It does. And so there was, I didn't realize, 650, 650 KW seems big to me. Is that what our, what's our generator? Do you happen to know? I'm catching off guard. What is the high school generator right now? Because I was thinking 250 or 300 KW, not 650.
I'm good, I'm thinking it's in the 400 KW range, I believe, because it only powers the front of the, the front portion of the high school, not the whole high school.
Okay, and I, I just, looking at this, I doubt anybody would have seen it, but you're talking about two units at 325 kilowatts each, so that doubles to the 650. But we're in excess of the 325. And the discussion we were having just a few days ago, it gets, there's a lot to sizing a fuel cell because you're not looking at just getting the energy, you're also looking at getting the, the thermals or the heating and air conditioning from it. And balancing those two loads is, for me, it's complicated. I've tried to look at it before. But there is a reason why we would build possibly a little bit bigger on the, above a 400 kilowatt generator and go all the way up to a 650 kilowatt generator. Effectively, it's a generator, it's a fuel cell. Because of other reasons beyond electricity. So thank you for that.
Okay.
And so the, the financing structure of this, do we effectively own all this equipment at the end of the 20-year contract?
We own it day one.
Okay.
Yeah, we own it day one. So what will happen is, once we complete the payment on that lease, any ongoing savings, we no longer have a lease payment, so all that savings is ours. So yeah, we own all the equipment, including the solar arrays, day one.
So what, so the way, what I was looking at before is the, the guaranteed savings is $1,080,000 and we're supposed to be getting $180,000 of.
Excess cash.
Excess cash, which means, is it fair to say that our annual payment is 900,000 approximately?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's correct. But I just want to add that when we add additional components to this energy performance contract through, and an addendum to this contract as the plan, those numbers will change.
Absolutely.
But our guaranteed savings will also increase. By law, this, these energy performance contracts have to be net cash flow positive. Could be a dollar.
Sure.
But they have to be cash flow positive. This, an energy performance contract is statu, statuarily permitted under Connecticut law and that's why we can engage in this type of a contract.
Okay. Yeah, no, and that makes sense to me because we're really talking about generation right now and the second phase of this project would be looking at more efficiency or conservation measures, I'm thinking, which could be taking out an old boiler and putting in a new, more efficient boiler. That's, yeah. So the total capacity, I was just counting it up, it looks like it's about two and a half megawatts. Do you happen to, just based on the handout that you gave us, do you happen to know what the estimated production would be on an annual basis?
Kilowatt hours?
Yeah.
It's about 4 million, 75,000. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and the, the last I looked at, I think the town used, the town, and I doubt it. Yeah, and the last I looked at it, I think the town used, the town, and I doubt it's changed all that much, we use about 6 million kilowatt hours. That includes town buildings as well, so...
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, no, this is, this is fantastic, I think, if we can, if we could get this done.
And, you know, I'll just note that the two new schools, those are all powered by electricity.
Yeah.
So they're going to use a lot more electricity than we've seen in any of our other buildings, because A, they're all electric, so no boilers, no natural gas, and B, they'll be fully air-conditioned, which our other schools are not. So being able to do these solar arrays at this time, and if everything goes according to plan, by the way, those solar arrays will be installed and operational when we open the new schools in the fall. That's the goal.
That'd be nice.
They're obviously both geothermal too, which...
Yes.
You know, really influences the heating and cooling. So I don't want people to think, oh, we're just all-electric. You know, geothermal's a huge offset.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, yeah. Uh, Dodd, I mentioned this. So I would say in terms of school modernization, I think our next, the next school we look at most likely, well, I shouldn't say that most likely, but I wonder about the significance of renovations at Dodd and locking into a 20-year contract for solar there. Would there be a possibility, and I know we chatted about this a few days ago offline, and you pointed out to me, like, well, we're talking about an eight-year window anyway. And so it just went through my head, I'm like, wait a second, an eight-year window? I'm like, yeah, we started this project before I got on the Board of Ed. I've now been on the Board of Ed for six years, and we're talking about another year before the schools opened. That's a seven-plus-year window, just to go through the new elementary schools. And we are not at the point, we are not at the point with any other schools where we were at six years ago, with an actual committee formed.
Appreciate your optimism, though.
And so it just struck me, would, if we did, if, could we do a carve-out for Dodd and just do 10 years? Or what might be some of the, I can envision some things. I'm wondering if you had any conversations about what, what Dodd looks like 10 years from now?
Well, as to whether or not we could carve out Dodd separately, I think even if we did, if you had a, you'd basically be paying the cost of carving out Dodd, assuming we could do it contractually, which you may not want to do that, because we don't know what's going to happen to Dodd.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, and I know that we talked the other night, we could redeploy that solar. You know, we could, those solar arrays will still be good. Let's say in 10 years, we do have a plan and we're going to build a, you know, new Dodd. Well, we could take the arrays and move them. So that's not a, that's a, not a sunk cost that is a throwaway. We could redeploy that. You can't get the infrastructure back, but you could certainly keep the arrays working. So, but I will ask that question, Tim, if there's a way to structure this financially.
Yeah. And I mean, the council already voted on this, and I'm comfortable moving forward right now. 10 years out is a long way, but I, I am, I think, I'm guessing, I'm not the only person who would have a little bit of discomfort with this. And I think my, I think my last comment right now is something that I had mentioned in some of the meetings, but just as a reminder of what I had said, if it could work, is I think increasing awareness of how energy works could be of interest to anybody. Most people, most people have relatively limited understanding of how energy works. And one of the things I had mentioned was, right inside the schools, just have a TV screen, it could be a touchscreen type of thing, where we could actually show people not only the production that's happening in the schools, but also the consumption with an interval demand meter, just, and people could see the curves and how they work. I think that, I think that could be interesting for the kids, just to sort of be learning a little bit of how, how energy works.
Yeah, and that is one of the things that Johnson Controls, when we did the interview with them, you know, before they were selected, they certainly are willing and have in other, you know, school districts done educational, you know, not only seminars, but displays where you could clearly see what you're saving on the solar side and/or the fuel cell. So I, that would be, I agree with you, it's a critical component of what we will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Ben, I just have a couple of questions, just for those that have not been fully following this, how long? Year or two process? So we have added weight onto these roofs that are quite older, so to speak, and structurally they can handle this extra on top of, you know, having snow and so on. I just don't know where, you know?
It's certainly an important component of the engineering review that gets done. The, the only structures that, not the only structure, but the structure that always has the most concern are those structures that have large spans, gyms, cafeteria. And so I've made it a point to ask not only Johnson Controls, but Energia as our owner's rep to double-check and make sure that, you know, we're comfortable with the large spans. Since I've been here, which is, you know, 15 years, we've had cases where we've had multiple snowfalls and then rain, and so, you know, we've had two feet of snow plus, you know, rain on top of the roofs. And we've had engineers just do an inspection. So that is certainly a concern that will be addressed. And one of the ways to address it on the large spans would be to move the solar off the center and do more around the periphery. So that is going to be a clear, you know, engineering double-check that I've asked for.
Yeah, I don't say that because of the last incident with the high school roof and how we had to tarp it really quickly.
Yeah, yeah. That, you know, in New England, that is certainly one of the key considerations as you look at, you know, adding rooftop solar.
And along the same lines, maintenance and repair-wise, who, who is responsible for that?
So part of what's built into the cost is annual and ongoing maintenance for those solar arrays. So there will be a third-party vendor that's, you know, going to be doing that, and again, it's included, you know, this is an all-in cost.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr., Ms. Kribble?
Mr. White left me a few questions, thank you. Appreciate that. Where to begin? Let's start with the million eighty. Is that a gross number? You said that we would incur a million eighty...
The guaranteed savings is a million eighty thousand.
Per year?
Per year, correct.
So the net cash flow number is gross savings less debt service that's on the chart? Is that the sort of language we're talking about here?
Yes. And I will say, and it's disclosed on that, in the chart on the last page, the assumed financing rate is 4.75%. So, you know, one of the key next steps, now that the contract's approved, we will issue an RFP to finance the project through a tax-exempt lease. So to the extent, if we get a better rate than 4.75, it improves the financial picture. To the extent we get a higher rate, which I don't think we will, that's, I think the 4.75 is pretty conservative, so I do expect we will do better. That will help, you know, improve the financial picture. In other words, it'll increase that net savings per year, and that gives us more room to do additional projects that don't have, you know, quick paybacks. Like when you replace a boiler, you know, the payback period is 30-plus years. So we'll be able to do boilers, even though we, you know, couldn't finance it under this energy performance contract without the significant savings from the solar and fuel cell, thanks to those credits we're getting.
So, so, so I, because I don't, the energy, energy part, you know, not my thing, right? But, so it's, we're turning the rooftop of our schools into a power plant so that we don't have to purchase electricity, but we have to finance that through debt.
Yes. Tax-exempt lease.
So we're not paying an electric bill anymore, we're paying a debt bill.
Correct.
And the, so I'm trying to think about where the spread is here. So we are, we are spending 35 million dollars in hopes to recoup 3.5 million dollars?
There's incentives there too.
But at the end of the day, you talked about the net cash flow.
Yeah.
Is, so to get that...
Just understand, when you say, you know, the...
Could you repeat that question, Adam?
Just generally, the arrangement is you're financing the installation of infrastructure, and the savings that you gain, including the incentives, will exceed the cost of that infrastructure improvement to, for this particular portion, it totals about 3.5 million dollars net over 20 years.
Right.
In addition to, you know, reducing your electricity and you're investing in renewable energy. After that 20-year period is over, you've paid back all your debt, and now you're still going to get that million dollars in savings. And you could see that the savings actually grows year over year, because there is an assumption of the cost of electricity increasing. I believe it's 3% per year. So after you're done paying this back, you're still generating 1.2 million a year. The question is, at the end of 20 years, how much solar power are you generating? You know, there is a degradation of how much energy you generate from a solar array over time. Doesn't go to zero, so you'll still have additional savings.
I think maybe we jumped the gun on this, just my opinion. So Dodd, we can remove the solar panels if we decide to have a new middle school in 10 years, right?
Yeah.
And move them somewhere.
New Dodd.
Right, new Dodd. And for Doolittle, I'm guessing the design isn't final, or did it account for new, I'm assuming it would be rooftop air conditioning for Doolittle, or the, what are those, the new fangled ones where they have the fans outside of every window?
Yeah.
Heat pumps.
Not fully designed yet.
Not fully designed. So that, that picture is a suggested layout, not a final layout?
I would say at Doolittle, it's pretty close.
Okay. So it has been considered, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and it may not, I'm not sure if we would do rooftop units at Doolittle.
Yeah. All right. Got all this stuff written down here. So how does Johnson Controls make their money on this? Do they make their money through the, just the actual construction of infrastructure? I mean, the...
Sure.
Construction of the solar panels, everything?
So they turn, the, the construction is turnkey. So we say, yep, we sign this contract, go build it, and they will take everything from there. They'll hire the contractors, you know, to do the work, they'll pay the contractors. We lay no money out, you know, and I know I didn't mention that earlier, but we have not spent any, we have not expended any funds to have this study done. Energia gets paid as part of the guaranteed savings. Johnson Controls, yes, they make their money primarily off the difference between what we're paying for the infrastructure and what they actually get it built for. But there's still net savings to us. Now, how do we ensure that Johnson Controls isn't making too much money? That's why we have an owner's representative in Energia looking at that.
So two more questions, if you don't mind? So the savings is based off of our current energy expenditures? Does that include electricity and oil, gas?
The savings is based on estimated electrical use over that period of time.
And that includes the new buildings?
The new Barnum, new Norton, right, where, you know, those buildings are not online, but we, we do know based on what that building will contain, what that electricity cost will be. And that was estimated, the, the actual, you know, kilowatt hour usage was estimated during the design of those buildings. So again, that's what Energia validates as part of this contract that we have with them.
Okay. And then lastly, so I've been on this board for eight years, and every year we talk about roof replacement or some sort of infrastructure replacement. And so, in, so how long are all these panels and everything warranted for? 20 years?
Well, the roof, the roofs are 20 years. The solar panels themselves...
And all the parts and bits?
Yeah. That's a good question. I don't know what the warranty is on a solar panel, but I can get that information and email the board.
So...
And just in the, just in the meantime, like I sold at my house, and I believe my panel warranty is 25 years, but the ancillary items are not. Like, it might be 10 years for an inverter. So there are costs of maintenance, like anything, that would be baked into it.
So where I'm going with this is now, the last 10 years, we've just been doing, let's say, roof replacements. But now going forward, let's say, 10 years from now, future boards will now have to not only do roof replacements, but also solar panel replacements and all of the bits, because they're going to be on all of our schools. Now, I don't, I definitely don't have a problem with it being on the new schools. If there's a place for solar panels to be, it's those schools. But it's just on the older schools, you know, my concern would be, now we have, you know, roof penetrations, however many that is, on all of these flat, you know, flat roofs, right? Most of them are flat roofs.
Yes.
Which are not, you know, I'm, they've all been replaced now with modern materials, I'm sure they work great, but now we're going to have to, that additional cost in the future. And so when we say savings, it's savings as a current, current looking at energy bills, but if you were to build in cost of maintenance in the future, or is that already built in?
Well, I think I understand what you're saying.
Because it seems like it'd be double the cost to keep this running in 10 years.
Again, there's a, there is a maintenance contract for the solar. As far as roof penetrations, the solar arrays sit on the roof. There's not a roof penetration at every solar cell.
Yeah. We did the same thing, we did the same thing at the dog park. It's called a floating array.
On a roof?
That's, I believe that's what sort of happens. I've seen them on roofs, and I'm assuming that's what we're doing here.
What, are they glued?
They're weighted.
They're weighted. That's why I asked about that.
They sit on a stand, and they're weighted.
You're talking, these are weighted enough that it'll stand up to a hurricane? 120 miles an hour? I mean, God forbid.
Well, if we have a 120 mile an hour hurricane, I'm not sure the roof would necessarily stay on in this area of the country, but yes, no, obviously they're engineered and they're weighted properly so that it's not going to blow off during a storm that we have here.
It's a regular storm.
Right. If we have a tornado hit a building, God forbid, yeah, then there's no amount of weight would protect us from that. You know, as far as any incremental cost that you have related to the installation here would be covered under the maintenance contract. If we have to replace a roof, you would, you would have that cost anyway, whether or not you had solar on it. And what you would do if you do need to do a roof replacement, for whatever reason, just the roof fails... for whatever reason, just the roof fails out of the blue, remove the solar array, right, they're just sitting on, on structures, replace the roof and put them back. So, I, but I think the important thing is, you're not getting roof penetrations at every solar block.
Well, that makes me feel better, that's, I did...
But, but there is, there is a, there is a requirement, though, that we don't void the warranty with the solar, so that is part of the work, the project scope, to make sure that we do not void the roof warranty.
So, on the new schools, where the infrastructure was built in, are they floating, or are they attached? Because it was sort of built that way.
Yeah, I don't, you know, unless it's on a smoke roof, it's not going to be attached, so, on the flat portions of roof, they will be, you know, weighted, and I, I can't speak to what the actual install is on the non-flat roofs I can find out, but, again, these buildings, you know, were designed and are being built to accommodate solar arrays, we would have funded it through the project if we had the funds. This is a, this is a really easy way to fund it, we have no outlay.
When I, what I recall from the discussions about the new construction, that probably passed most people quickly, but in terms of being solar-ready, it was discussed as, including, and EV-ready as well, electric car, it was discussed in terms of having the conduit in place, which, correct me if I'm wrong, the conduit's basically PVC pipe to allow, to allow for the wires to go, so, that's what was discussed, so I don't think it's, I think it would be, I'm guessing, it's most likely that it would just be floating arrays with access through the roof available.
Thank you.
This is a, hopefully, a quick question, but timeframe, did you say earlier that this, in order to get, pick up reimbursements, this needs to all be completed by December?
Not completed, construction has, five percent of construction has to be completed by December.
Okay, so, obviously, the new schools won't be ready to put solar panels on, but it doesn't all need to be done.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. White, another question?
Yeah, with regard to the incentives, from what I recor, if you happen to recall this, the developer had mentioned that the, and the few, there are fuel cell incentives that are going away at this moment in time, so not the end of the year, but in August, and we had to already queue up for it?
Yeah, the, the Enrez, we have to submit the application by September twenty-seventh, I believe.
Okay, so, it's not, my point being that it's not just federal incentives that are going away, it's state incentives, and the state has a whole bunch of incentives, but at least that one, maybe more, would be going away before the end of the year, which also sort of encourages the fast-tracking of this. And for anyone who's curious, I suspect, I strongly suspect, that some of these incentives that exist are directly related to what many people, I think, know now, the public benefit charge at the state level, that's where the money flows, so, from what I see, I mean, I prefer to not have lots and lots of programs like this, but they're there, the money's on the table.
Yeah.
And, my view is, let's take advantage of it.
I, I think what's happening, the fuel, the Enrez program isn't going away, but the fuel cells are no longer eligible under the Enrez program, you know, effective October one, that's hence the, you know, attempt to get those, that in before that deadline.
Mr. Grippel.
Sorry, just one more question. Why was it decided to go so large? So, why, you know, the new schools are obvious, maybe the fuel cells are a little less obvious, but why was it decided to not do a smaller program like that versus covering all of our buildings in solar panels?
Well, the, the more solar coverage you have, the more electricity you generate, and the greater savings that you have. I don't know that there's, you know, any reason beyond that. One of the goals is to try and generate enough electricity from solar to completely offset the cost of electricity. We're not going to get there with all the buildings, but we will with the new schools, but to get there with Barnum, you need that solar carport, and that one, you know, it's up to the school building committee if they'll be okay with that.
Yeah, just, just to speak to your point, Adam, the, from what I recall, from several years ago, the town consumes about six million kilowatt hours, and this project, Vin had mentioned, so correct me if I'm wrong, is the anticipated production is about four million kilowatt hours.
Right.
So, where everything, everything we are generating will be able to consume, with a critical piece being, there's a program called virtual net metering, which means if the police station could use extra power, we can use the, the energy generated at the high school, and we can offset it on the bill at the police station. It's just, it's the way the program is designed, and you can do that for up to ten accounts, but we only have, I think we have about forty buildings in town, so if this is going on eight different schools, six, six schools, that means we have up to sixty accounts that could benefit from it. So, I mean, we could even do, like, you know, the bathroom at, the new bathroom at Bartlam Park, because we just have the bandwidth to do it, based on the design of the program, so if any of the schools have more solar on their, if they have more solar than they can use, we're just going to end up metering it back to, sending that energy back to any of the other town buildings, I'm, I'm confident that's what we would end up doing. Just, and to, just to be clear on this, do, yes, the hundred-eighty thousand dollars in savings, in excess cash flow, do we have, who has the actual final say on what happens with that? Because my suspicion is that these decisions are actually be, will be made by the council, and not by the Board of Ed.
Well...
So, we'll, we'll probably send nine hundred, so they'll give us an annual budget, let's just say our annual budget's a hundred million dollars a year, what we're doing is, we're saying nine hundred thousand of that is dedicated to paying off this, and that just goes back to the town, it doesn't really matter how it works, but in terms of, like, that, that savings, is that a, is that a town council vote, or a board vote? Because we're voting on Ed specs here, not on financing issues.
Right, so, again, what will happen is, that hundred-eighty thousand a year, our plan is to have an amendment to this contract that says, we're going to not have a hundred-eighty thousand dollars a year, because we're going to add air conditioning at Doolittle, we're going to upgrade the police boilers, and we're going to shoot to get that cash flow, you know, down to, I'm going to just, for emphasis, get it to a dollar per year, because that's what you have to do under the law, because a key component of doing this energy performance contract is to get infrastructure work done that we would ordinarily have to bond, you know, through the capital budget process, you know, and, you know, sometimes it, it takes us, you know, unfortunately, several years to get projects approved, whether it's a replacement of boilers, or if it's a roof replacement, or some of the other work, like, you know, you know, Doolittle air conditioning, you know, is looked at, you know, not, not necessarily by me, but it can be looked at as, you know, something you don't really need, since you only need air conditioning in, you know, May and June, when the schools are open, or September and October. So, it's, to me, it's not a luxury, but it can be looked at something that you could just push off another year, and that's, you know, what's been happening, that is the reality. So, we can fund those type of improvements through this project.
So, it, it is going to be, it, it's going to be this sort of collaborative process, the board, the council, the energy committee that's put together. And another point to what you were just making, which is, one of my concerns, is that we're, we're in the process of two new elementary schools, I think the tax burden right now on people, affordability is a huge concern. It is for me, and I'm sure it's for many other people. Nonetheless, I, there are improvements that I think could and should be made at, particularly, like, at Doolittle, Doolittle and Highland, where those parents voted in favor of these projects, and I think it's, I think some of those, I think some of those improvements would be really important to make, and I also think it would be really difficult to, the, the fewer times that the council goes out and asks for, say, three and a half million dollars for a project, for stuff that makes sense, that should be done, that, you know, we could all collectively look at and say, yeah, that, that should be done, like, a new roof, or whatever it might be, I think it's, I think this is an opportunity that could work well, finding that three million dollars sort of excess cash flow savings, so. I, I'm, as we get to the vote, I just want to reiterate that I want to support, I want to support the motion, but I do still have the reservations on Dodd about that, because it's, it's, it's basically like a lock-in, which frankly, from a taxpayer's perspective, I pay taxes, okay, we're going to go with Dodd, but that, there is a bigger question there than simply that, so, that's all, thank you.
And I don't disagree with that, Mr. White, I think if we had that crystal ball to see what, you know, the public feels about that decision later on, it'd be great, but I think at this point, if it benefits us, the majority of us, I'm talking about the other locations, and that we move forward to do that. I, I definitely vote that Mr. White should be the poster boy for the awareness campaign. I do agree that we do need to educate our community, for sure.
I thought Mr. White has been for the last decade.
He has. But, we need to take this very slow and in chunks, because, I mean, and I agree with Adam, you know, we're not full experts on this either, and so, I just want to be sensitive to the community that hasn't been following along in these conversations either, and now we're moving to vote and starting the work, which, we do have to start by September tenth, it looks like, to, to get five percent done by December, so, if at all possible, please generate some sort of campaign when we begin. I do have one last question, Vin. We have six schools, we start on the tenth after this vote, what is the disruption to the schools with regards to work being done on the roofs right now, if any at all?
Yeah, we, we don't expect any disruption to the schools, we certainly always look to avoid that, so, some of this, you know, work will start, but the bulk of it will be done over the summer.
Okay, thank you. Any other last thoughts? All right, so, we have actually six motions that need to be taken up separately, from my understanding.
Correct.
Okay. So, if I can...
I, I will just, sorry, Ms. Rosenberg.
Yes.
These are the standard motions we do for any school construction grant that's required as part of the state process. The town council, if it makes you feel better, had to do three resolutions for each of the schools, so, they had to do eighteen, you only need to do six tonight.
Thank you, it makes me feel much better to sound like a burger record. So, we can start with the first, Mr. White, do you want to begin?
So, we're, I read one, and we vote on it? Just to be clear?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the educational specifications for the solar panel installation at Norton Elementary School.
Is there a second, Dr. Harrigan? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Grippel.
Just for clarification, Norton Elementary, that will be the new school, and not the one we're going to be destroying in a year.
That is correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or edits to the... Okay, all those in favor of the motion that is on the floor, approved. Next one, sir?
Move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the educational specifications for the solar panel installation at Barnum Elementary School.
Second, Dr. Harrigan, discussion. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, approved, next.
Moved that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the educational specifications for the fuel cell and solar panel installation at Cheshire High School.
Second, Dr. Harrigan, discussion. All those in favor, unanimous, next?
Moved that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the educational specifications for the solar panel installation at Dodd Middle School.
Second, Dr. Harrigan, discussion. Yes, Mr. Grippel.
I just wanted to say that I'll be voting against this motion, I think that putting solar panels on top of a middle school that's been derided for at least ten years, maybe more, where there's a significant amount of, of the town who wishes to have a new middle school, and to put solar panels on it is short-sighted, so I'll be voting against it, thank you.
Any other discussion on the matter? All those in favor of the motion that is on the floor? Three in favor, all those who oppose, one oppose, the motion passes.
Move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the educational specifications for the solar panel installation at Doolittle Elementary School.
Dr. Harrigan, second, discussion on this next motion. Now, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, unanimous, and last but not least?
Move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the educational specifications for the solar panel installation at Highland Elementary School.
Discussion on the last mo, oh, second, sorry, Dr. Harrigan, discussion on the last motion, all is in favor, unanimous on the last motion, thank you, everybody. We conclude planning committee, and we're moving, thank you, Mr. Maciana. Move on to any other standing committees? Any board members have reports on any other committees? No.
It's still summer.
It is still summer, but we have been quite busy, though, as evidenced by this pile of papers that we're going through. Next item is the approval of our minutes from the, oh, we have three meetings, four? Four meetings, okay. Approval of minutes on the meetings that were held on June fifth, June thirtieth, July thirtieth, and July thirtieth retreat as well. Can I get a motion? Dr. Harrigan, can you read the motion?
Yeah. Be it moved that the Cheshire Board... Be it moved that the Cheshire Board of Education approved the minutes from meetings held, Board of Education Business Meeting held June fifth, Board of Education Fiscal Business Meeting held June thirtieth, Board of Education Special Meeting held July thirtieth, and Board of Education Retreat Meeting held July thirtieth.
Is there a second for the motion, Mr. Grippel? Any additions or corrections within the minutes?
I have a quick question, I, we didn't have minutes for the retreat, did we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're linked in the, um...
Oh, they, okay.
No linkable.
The linked agenda?
Agenda, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other additions or corrections or comments? All those in favor of the motion that is on the floor, unanimous, thank you.
Did you get a second? Didn't you, Mr. White, second?
You got it.
Carol?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Grippel, any correspondence, sir?
I am not in possession, I am not in possession of any correspondence.
Thank you. And then, we move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Solon.
Thank you very much. Can't get enough of the, the big screen up there, so, we're going to go back to that for, hopefully, what's amounts to a pretty quick presentation on our start time adjustment process, the board members have in their packet, this PowerPoint presentation, or you can follow along on the screen, it should be a little easier to follow in most spots than the last one, just because of the nature of it. Anyway, for twenty-six, twenty-seven, I can't reiterate that enough, we're talking about twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven start times, not next Thursday, but twenty-six, twenty-seven start times. So, why do we need to adjust start times? It's a question I get asked, I think there's a, can be a little confusion around it, really, it's, it's twofold, the rationale, first of all, is the geography of the schools, of the elementary schools around the building, we're moving several hundred students to a different location in town, as well as many buses that are associated with those students, that in itself means that the buses need a little bit more time to get there and be reconfigured in town for the next wave of, of buses. for the next wave of, of buses. Also, traffic, I mean, over, the, the start times for our buildings have been the same, I've worked here 20 years, pretty much the same for the 20 years. The, the evolution of traffic in the town, as well as people driving their children to school, has changed dramatically over the last two decades, and our start times now are not really accurate, to be honest with you, so, for example, the Highland departure time says 3:30, the kids don't get out of there really till four, those last buses, because the traffic is so bad and Route 10 is insane trying to get out, we are working with the town and state to try and add a, another lane there for exiting. We do anticipate a significant improvement, though, on three, you know, if not four of our campuses, with Norton and, uh, North End, Barnum, being configured for the traffic that we, um, see today, as well as Highland, when you remove 200 students out of there, should be a lot easier when you remove a lot of buses as well, so, that is why we are changing it. But, when we were exploring options, we thought maybe we wanted to, um, take a look at adjusting start times, really reflecting research, so that was one of the options that, uh, we examined in that process, and it was interesting, um, as we were looking at that, I got an email from a Cheshire resident, Carl Mings, who, uh, wrote an article, a clinical review for the delayed school start times and adolescent sleep, a systematic review of experimental evidence, and his co-author, Nancy Reddicker is also a Cheshire resident, so, found that really interesting, I appreciate him reaching out to me with that resource in particular. And so we did look at, you know, what are the implications of this, so, when we designed some initial options for feedback, we did that in the spring. Early summer, we solicited feedback from students, staff, and parents via, via both online surveys and groups. I had several, uh, virtual group meetings with, uh, folks, stakeholders, staff, parents, um, and it was really valuable feedback. We then, uh, in midsummer, took that feedback, made some revisions, uh, and issued again for more feedback. And here we are, finally, at the end of the summer, looking at what I hope to be final considerations. So, our initial early summer survey, uh, the first choice, which happened to be a lot like our current schedule, the proposal A was the most favored, 31.7% selected that is their most favored, when you look at the 2,200 responses we had, which is really strong, we don't get 2,000 responses for most anything, so, um, that was, I guess, the good news. It was also the bad news, because 33% had it as their least favorite option, more than the people who selected it for their most favorite option. So, it was really interesting to have that kind of dichotomous result, um, where you love it or hate it, kind of thing. So, some of the considerations that we had to review, uh, there was not just the, um, the feedback around select your favorite, but there was a lot of open-ended analysis that went on, there was also, like I said, those opportunities to, uh, meet with me, and we took all of that different feedback. People did, there was strong interest in a later school start time for the high school, which, you know, I think was honestly a little bit surprising to me, that there was that much interest in it, um, from our, you know, K6 parents, or K12 parents. Later school start times would unfortunately coincide with peak rush hour on Route 10, however. When I met with the traffic division, you know, if we bumped school back an hour, and, and the traffic went from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM to get to school, a lot of that time would be sitting on Route 10. Therefore, you know, undercutting the effort to provide more opportunity for sleep. A single bus run cost before fuel, I mean, you know, this is a, um, estimate of $80,000, it's actually closer to 90 when you bake fuel into the equation and everything. Um, so, to add several runs, because one of the options was, right now, we have a three-tier system. If we just added more buses and made a two-tier system, one on each tier, the cost would go up astronomically, and, and that was a deterrent, obviously. And then finally, you know, the significant adjustments to start time, as I kind of talked a little bit, were welcomed by many and rejected by many. Some people thought it was great, other people horrible, right, so, um, I guess, and, I would make the point here that, you know, we were not expecting, you don't expect unanimous endorsement of anything, but we weren't looking to get close, knowing the passion that exists among the, uh, 8,000 stakeholders that were kind of involved in this process. So, midsummer adjustments, alright, this is our current schedule, and when we got that feedback, um, we said, alright, well, here was initial proposal A that was the most favorable, but again, also the least favorable, dug into why a little bit, and we created a revised proposal A to kind of address those concerns. One of the major concerns that, um, was voiced, and it was really out of the elementary, uh, groups, that 3:50 on initial proposal A is the, the end of day for Norton and Highland was, um, not tolerable for our families, because they said, my kids have to get to events at four, 4:30, um, and if I'm getting out at 3:50, that's the bell, I'm not getting home, there's not even getting home at 4:30. Um, so what we did was try and squeeze down, I worked with Luther and, and Emily, we worked together to try and massage that back end of that, because that was the, the driving factor, really, around a lot of the, the discomfort with that proposal. So, then we, we sent that revision out to the community, and this is, this chart is honestly a bit cumbersome, but it's parent feedback from more than 1,200 people, and you had the option of indicating, I could tolerate it, I don't like it, I hate it, I love it. So, it was really, it fell into those two, you know, was it favorable? Not super favorable, but favorable, and, or unfavorable. And, um, the revision had a favorability index of 82.56%, of our families, our parents, said that this schedule was favorable. Which, to me, was like, oh my God, I wasn't expecting to get 82% after 30% being the, the peak initially. So then the, the, uh, staff data, for about 300 staff members, um, 77.8% favorable, uh, you know, 22.2% unfavorable. Again, really, you know, generally a pretty positive number. Um, where it wasn't as favorable were some of the later schools. You can see, it was, I could tolerate it at Highland and Norton, didn't really love it. The student, um, count, and this was only in students grade six through 12, 118 students, I appreciate them taking the time to take the survey, 70% favorable roughly, 68.64. So, with the feedback that we received, and knowing where the faculty, um, sat on this, and, and they didn't like that they were getting out significantly later, uh, 4:15, because, um, you know, they're starting later in the morning, but they're getting out later, and then they have their own children, um, and their activities and everything else. So, on the, the bottom right, what you see is the proposed schedule with faculty start and end times. If you remember, it was 80-plus percent favorable from parents, so, I didn't think we really had to address that group all that much in terms of making modifications. But the staff was, you know, really not favorable, and that was driven by predominantly Norton and Highland. So, what I did was talk to our administrators, I'm talking to the union, we're considering making a shift there, where we're adding a little bit more time in the morning for our staff, taking a little bit of time away in the afternoon, and ultimately, what you end up with is, um, an adjustment, uh, there for, for our staff, from a 4 o'clock end day to 4:05, which is beyond reasonable, I think, uh, under the circumstances. Now, the other reality is that we, um, we don't know what dismissal and traffic will look like at the new buildings yet. So, this is 26, 27, and if we find that, you know, we're wildly efficient, and everybody's just sitting around at that point, we could make another adjustment. But, I think, you know, what I'm trying to illustrate is, over the course of probably five months now, um, if, I think that's probably fair, maybe longer, we've worked, Emily, you know, even Vin, uh, Marlene, Luther, our, our, uh, police department, you know, we've worked in, taking a look at this, had a lot of feedback from parents and staff and students, and crafted what I think, again, we're never going to get unanimous endorsement of anything, but I think what we've crafted is the most reasonable schedule that is also accurate and accommodates our, our community needs. So, I'm presenting it tonight, I'll share it with our, you know, stakeholders again tomorrow, but I would anticipate that, you know, by the time we, come back here again on September 4th to, uh, review the opening of schools, that, at that point, I think we'll be ready to, to adopt this or something very close to it. And, um, that's important, because the next phase in this transition that we're, uh, you know, living through, is that our faculty is going to have to think about, you know, the transferring of people. You know, we're redistricting the, the community, our students will be, um, dispersed differently than they are now, right? We have 950 kids at Highland School, 200 of those students will then be going to, um, Barnum, and that means we're going to be shifting staff there, too. And, to be fair to them, we want them to know, like, alright, well, what's the, the time of that building, and does that work for my family, for me to be able to, to request a transfer to that building, or would that not be working? Because if you remember, early on in the presentations, you know, the, the reviews that we were doing, the elementary school could have potentially been, you know, much later start time, uh, or much earlier start time, excuse me, so, like, now that people know, um, and the community now will have a year to prepare for, I think, what amounts to relatively minor adjustments for most people. And then our faculty will be able to make a decision about whether they want to request a transfer, doesn't mean it's automatically going to be granted, we need to make sure that the faculties are balanced between the buildings, but, um, I think it puts everybody on much more solid ground to be able to move into this next phase. So, at this point, obviously, I'll entertain any questions you guys may have. I think that was the last slide, yeah.
Sticking with the theme this evening, um, what's the, uh, cost increase? I know we're looking at like almost $800,000 on some of these routes.
Right, the, the, um, cost increase on this proposal, because our costs are predicated on the, um, peak number of buses we have in any current run. So, um, this proposal increase, it adjusts the number of buses that we have in the current run, because, just, we would have to do this anyway. It's not a function of the times per se, so, all of the, um, except for the later high school start time, all of them had cost increases. Ironically, the, the one with the later start times was actually a bit cheaper, but this one, the, the overall baseline cost increase is $367,000. Yeah, so it's, I mean, some of the other-
That's not terrible.
Some of the other configurations, right, as much as, like I said, the two-tier, um, when we were looking, alright, so the later high school start time to drop in a three-tier system, uh, was $73,000 cheaper. So, although the community hated it, so, that didn't work. Um, to go with the early elementary start, later high school start time, on a, on a three-tiered system, a million dollars more expensive. The, um, other proposal we had was a, tried to be more, uh, cost-effective version of a two-tiered system with an earlier high school start, that was a $734,000 increase. The two-tier later high school was 800,000 increase. So, this also happens to be the most, you know, one of the most economical options of the various proposals. We initially looked at five different proposals, this is the second cheapest of the five. So, I think there are a lot of reasons, and again, that's why I indicated in the considerations that cost is a factor, um, for everybody. So, you know, all things considered, I think, uh, we're in really good shape here, um, but I, like I said, I will issue this out to the community again tomorrow. Yeah, Tim?
So, you said it's about $400,000, a $400,000 increase on a $4 million budget, is that right? So, it's about a 10% increase?
Um, well, if those numbers are accurate, Vin, I don't know if the, the, uh, transportation budget is, like, the busing budget is accurate, you would know 367. Yeah, so it's 367,000 on 400, so, less than 10%.
Less than 10%, because it says 4.3 million, but I wasn't sure if the transportation line item was matched up to what we're talking about tonight, or if there was some other factors in there.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to defer to Vin on that detail.
And what's the delta between, um, what you're thinking right now versus the least expensive option?
Well, about more than $400,000. The least expensive option would be a later high school start time.
Yeah.
That would be $73,000 cheaper than what we currently do.
On top of the 367, so we're talking about a $450,000 difference between the two, okay.
But, it wasn't favorable.
But, yeah, that was one that nobody liked.
It could save us money, but it's not favorable to the other variables.
And it creates other issues like traffic issues.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not saving any time, that doesn't, uh-
Yeah, it doesn't save you the time that you're looking for, creates significantly more traffic issues, and could potentially-
I don't want to make traffic getting worse in town.
Right.
That's for sure.
Yeah, at 8:00 AM.
Uh, one, I think just one last question on this, for Emily, these are, uh, my understanding is the $80,000 per year, the $400 per day for a bus, then that includes five and a half hours, six hours of bus driver time?
Yeah, five and three quarters.
So, how's, is, do they basically do two different shifts effectively then, like a morning shift? Because we're running, they're going to be on the road, and sort of available from 7:00 AM until 4:30, so I'm assuming that's more than five and a half hours, so they get like a four-hour lunch break, kind of?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of however we economize that drive time, so it's on the road is the five and three quarters, it's not accounting for breaks or anything. So, if we can make, you know, a two-tier system, with a two-tier system, you're less economical, right, because you don't have your drivers on the road as much time as you have for a three-tier system. But it's, that is the cost, three hour, five hours and three quarters per day.
Okay, even though, even though it happens over a nine-hour period.
Right, and they have to guarantee their drivers that, and they have to guarantee their drivers that, or they walk and go work someplace else. So, even if we did it at four hours, you know, we wouldn't have any drivers at that point.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand that completely, I was just trying to understand that, because I'd never seen that before.
When the board is, um, done with their questions, then we usually defer to the, the, um, audience at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Solan?
Do you want to take a question from the community?
Uh, we can definitely take a question from the community, given that we don't have a large audience.
Ms. Flanagan, if you want to step up to the mic, you know, we can, because it's recorded, and we can't hear you if you're just asking from your seat, thank you.
My question is, do we own the school buses, or are they leased?
So, the, we have a contract with Daco, and, um, we're charged through that. The, the cost of owning a school bus, uh, is really prohibitive.
Right.
We, and we've entered a recent agreement, a, a new contract with Daco, um, and, you know, it, we've had a mutual, uh, beneficial relationship, I think, with them, they just purchased, uh, property in town to maintain, uh, provide maintenance on fleet. So, it, that will make our service much cheaper, um, they have, are, are expanding their operations here in Cheshire on Sandbank Road, so, it's, it's, we've benefited from their growth in our community. we've benefited from their growth in our community.
The other question I had related to buses was, did you look into smaller buses for some routes versus the standard-sized bus? I mean, was that a consideration to be able to save some costs?
Absolutely. We have, so, we do own some buses and vans that are smaller than the standard school bus, and we provide that route service where it's appropriate to maximize our cost. Our current transportation director spent many years working, I think it was for FedEx, and we leverage all the technology we can and artificial intelligence to map the most efficient route with the, you know, maximizing the seats on the bus.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Actually, just if you would, Dr. Solon, I know this isn't a discussion point, but it kind of ties into your, we have had several inquiries about the busing exception process and so on, and so if you can kind of clarify for those at home who would like to submit, I know there was a rash of emails that came in after Luther sent out the bus times, the bus routes, so...
Yeah, I think actually, it was, it was probably before that, because, actually, I know it was before that, because what happened is that we have, you know, our board policy, pretty much like every school system in Connecticut, K through six, if you live within a mile of the school, you're designated as a walker. It doesn't mean your kindergartner is expected to necessarily walk alone, or, by the way, that one-mile distance can be from your bus stop as well. So, you could walk a mile to your bus stop, you could walk a mile to the school. And we knew that with our enrollment increases that we've seen over the last few years, we used to easily, pretty much guarantee, if you lived within the walking zone and you filed an available seat petition, that you, we could easily, pretty much say, all right, yeah, we're going to have seats on the bus. Not a ton of seats, but we knew that there would be an available seat for you, and we could put you on that. So, we had families that had approved stops kind of close to their neighborhood or home for the last four, five, six, seven years, and knowing that that may not be feasible this year, on June second, we sent an email to all parents, it says, you know, basically, as our community continues to grow, we see an increase in student population, the available seat petition may not be available to you, and that, you know, you need to submit your forms on time, and we were telling people in late August that, you know, I can't approve your request yet. The available seat petition, actually, the form says that, you know, we'll, we don't necessarily approve your form until September fifteenth, because we want to know what ridership on the bus looks like before we start guaranteeing walkers. But in the last, like I said, handful of years, we've been able to approve it much, much sooner. So, you know, when people were told that, yeah, we can't approve your seat yet, you know, some people took to Facebook, some people called Luther, some people emailed us, and so, I am afraid it created some confusion for the riding population who lives more than a mile from, it's like, am I not getting a bus? That's never a question. If you live more than a mile from your school, you will always get a bus, and that's where we're at right now, unfortunately, where some of the people who live in the walking zone who would like a bus, they're in a little bit of a wait-and-see period till after school starts, and we can better gauge the ridership on the bus. And if, you know, of course, if there are seats available and, you know, we're coming through your neighborhood, yeah, we'll pick you up, as long as we're not going to make stops at every door, but, you know, we'll see what we can do, as we've done forever. So, right now, we're just kind of in limbo on that. I have copies of the available seat petition and the memo that we sent to families, if, you know, and give them out afterward.
Thank you, Dr. Solon. Any other questions? Mr. Grippel.
This isn't bus-related, but it's walker-related.
Sure.
Just because, as I've said many times, I live there, right? The new crosswalks at the Barnum School, where there is high rate of speed. How would I petition to, like, who would I petition? Town Council, or is it the Building Committee for some more effective measures for, let's say, speed control that doesn't involve police? You know, more, I guess, physical barrier gates or some, yeah, something like that, like, well, probably not both, but...
I think...
Like, for recommendations, or if, has that passed, and that was already, it's already been considered?
So...
You know, like, now that you see it on the ground, you kind of look both ways down.
Yeah, so the police department basically controlled, like, the traffic division makes recommendations on that sort of stuff, and that's, we're not foreign to that, we've had those sort of questions asked over the years on, in different locations, actually, I forget the name of the street, Vin, you remember a few years ago, we had that car go off the road, over by Pop's Pizza, I forget the name of that street, but, you know, where the family was concerned about, you know, families who live over there were concerned about speed, and so we engaged the police department and stuff like that in those sort of situations, and they're helpful. But I think, you know, maybe you want to start with the traffic division there. We haven't identified yet twenty-six, twenty-seven, like, the police department oversees the crossing guards, and so, you know, they haven't gotten there yet for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and where they will station a person to support crossing, but I'm sure if you drive around town in the morning, you'll see crossing guards out, and they might put a crossing guard up there, I wouldn't be shocked if they did.
So, I mean, I know that, you know, we've had discussions about, you know, well, you just put a bus, because it may, even though we put in a nice crosswalk now and everything, it's right across the street, it still may not be, I mean, I know kids at Norton, you know, cross forty-two all the time if there's a crossing guard and stuff like that, so, yeah, maybe that's all being set up, and so...
So, just one other point there, you know, you made me think of, as you were talking about it, that there's another form on our transportation site called an accommodation form two, and, you know, if you reach out to, and I know you guys on the board have seen these periodically over the years, like, my location is unsafe, you can still fill that out, too. And we do have a couple of those places that, you know, it's not safe for kids to be walking or whatever, because there's no sidewalk usually. And, you know, we do have a couple of those as well. And the police evaluate those, we don't really evaluate that.
And, kudos to the company.
Vinny's up and in action now.
Kudos to the company that built the sidewalks, are they looking...
Yeah, they did a great job with the sidewalks.
I did want to add the point that for both new schools, Jeff, I'm sure, this just triggered that there were some specific specifications in design for the crosswalks at Barnum, some lighted signage at the crosswalks. I could pull those specs on Monday and send them out, but we're going to have more than just a crosswalk, like we do at the traditional schools, so that may, you know, help you, and then you could take it from there if you need to further add them.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, I appreciate that.
But I will pull that. Do you remember, Jeff, we, it came up during the planning and zoning meeting even, so there are specs, and I just don't remember the details, but I'll pull them.
Thank you.
So, Vin, just to clarify, you're going to have the crosswalk plus the lighting plus the human factor of a crossguard as well?
Well, I can't speak to the crossing guard, because that's not set definitively, but the signage that's been designed as part of the new schools, you know, that is definitive, so I get that, and I'll issue it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Solon, and if there's any additional items. Mr. White?
Thank you. Yeah, the, with regard to the one-mile rule, it does seem like a, it does seem like a reasonable concern, a very important concern on the part of parents who fall within the one-mile, the concerns for safety. One thing, I was reading an article totally unrelated to this topic, the article was kind of related to the youngest generation and getting kids out in their neighborhoods and playing, but what it was talking about was a change that's happened in the last, say, forty or fifty years, where cars are physically bigger, SUVs, they're wider than cars used to be. So, you said that there is, you just mentioned that there is a mechanism, a tool for people to use when they feel they're unsafe, and then the police would get involved to review it, presume, like, number of cars on the road, stuff like that, I think that's some of their standard stuff. Have you ever, have the Cheshire Public Schools ever changed based on what the police have said?
Yeah.
Okay, so there is, there is a real input there, and it is a possibility for parents to, a path for parents to go.
Sure, it's...
Okay. I wasn't sure if, I just want to make sure it wasn't cursory, like, oh, we'll send it to the police and they say everything's fine, and then we walk away from this. It is an actual discussion that we're involved in with the parents.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, the, this, on the screen, you can see the accommodation petition, it could be, you know, generally around a bus stop or bus route, and you can fill that out, and then the police department reviews it, along with DATCO, Public Works, management, whoever, you know, Jermaine, too.
Yeah.
And then they issue some sort of decision. And I'll say sometimes, you know, the decision is not one that the family agrees with, or sometimes it's not one that we agree with, but they, they go through the process.
But, yeah, they're just doing it on their standard protocol, which, for the police side, it could, you know, they might put up a stop sign or something like that, but they look at the actual traffic that goes through that intersection.
Sometimes, yeah, it could be modified, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Then one other point, just to what Adam was talking about before, I think you're sort of alluding to traffic calming measures, and just one point on that that comes to mind for me is speed bumps. My general understanding is that the police do support something like that, and Public Works fights it all the time. They don't have to deal with it with snowplows.
I don't think you could put that on Jarvis or Marion Road, though, that's...
I think it would be tough, but I mean...
That's a very high traffic area, I don't think.
And we need traffic calming measures, but we don't have them in...
They do it in, like, New Haven, but, you know, they can do it in New Haven, but...
Yeah, I mean, we basically, my understanding is we generally don't have them in town because the Public Works, it complicates their life more than anything. It's not even about residents, it's more about Public Works.
Yeah, plowing it, yeah.
Exactly.
Actually, Dr. Solon, I do have one more point, if you will, and if you can disclose as much as possible, which, this is the first time I've encountered this, inquiries about changing school districts. We did have one inquiry from a parent from another town who allegedly lives right on the border of, and they would like to send their children to Cheshire Public Schools as opposed to the neighboring town, so how does one...
Sure, we get those inquiries pretty regularly.
Okay.
And, you know, you may have heard me say more than once, people don't move here for the nightlife.
Never heard of it.
And they don't move next door to take advantage of, yeah, but people that live on the periphery of Cheshire often, Carol, how many, several times a year, we, many times a year, probably, we get the inquiry. Sometimes there are little wrinkles that we want to investigate a little further to ensure that we're making an accurate decision, but if your property pays taxes to another community, that's where you go to school. And it is tricky, because there are some actual addresses that say Cheshire, but don't, they're not Cheshire property, maybe because that's where the mailbox is, it's weird, and so they're not, and so some of them get a little bit trickier, and, but unfortunately, you know, we educate the students who live in Cheshire and pay their property tax to Cheshire. Yes, sir.
My recollection from about twenty years ago, and you might recall this, I believe it was Stanford Greenwich, and the kid and the parents went to court, and the ultimate decision was where the head, where the head hits the pillow in the room. And so, if you have bedrooms that are straddling line, it's theoretical that you can go to, you know, whichever class, whichever district you want to go to. I don't know how the courts view it in terms of, like, a closet being on the line, but that was, that, I'm almost positive that was, it was a decision that was made.
Maybe it depends on if you sleep in your closet, but I did consult with Floyd on this one as well, just to verify that it was the accurate decision. This guy's...
There are properties that are paying taxes, percentages of taxes to Cheshire and to another community.
Dwelling is...
The other tricky thing is that sometimes the vehicle tax can go to one and the home to another, it's really, there are tricky ones like that, and so we do try and do our diligence and evaluate them.
Thank you for clarifying that for us. Next item is old business, I do not have any, if board members have any other, any old businessness to share? Lastly, I really would just like to say, have a great school year, because we're starting early, so convocation is on the eighteenth, and this is going to be a really exciting, you can smell the fresh new school year smell right now, so I'm really excited, this is my favorite time of year. I did want to bring up one thing that, to my knowledge, Cabe, Mr. Perugini is not here, but Cabe is, and I will have a conversation with him, establishing an alumni group, if you will, for past board members or board members who are, who were part of Cabe and doing work with Cabe, so I'm going to highly encourage Mr. Perugini to continue the work with them, if he could. But outside of that, the following are the upcoming meetings for the school year currently. Thursday, September fourth, would be the BOE opening of schools meeting here at Town Council Chambers at seven-thirty. Monday, September eighth, the Curriculum Committee will be meeting at seven at Central Office Boardroom. Monday, September fifteenth, the Policy Committee meets at seven at the Central Office Boardroom. Thursday, October sixteenth, the Board of Ed Business Meeting will take place here at seven-thirty in Town Council Chambers. As far as school and community events and activities are concerned, as I mentioned, August eighteenth, convocation is at eight-thirty, and I will be there, I'm hoping other board members could join. August twenty-first will be the first day of school for all students, and then we move into September first, which is Labor Day break, schools are closed, and September twenty-third, which is the Rosh Hashanah holiday, schools will be closed then. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I actually?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe October fourteenth for Indigenous Peoples' Day should be October thirteenth. It should be October thirteenth, which is the Monday.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Hi. Any want to motion to adjourn? Yes, ma'am.
I'm interested in the curriculum, the high school reading list, things like that, how would I find that out?
Why don't we adjourn, and I'll come over and look and check?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. White? Call for a motion to adjourn? Anybody want to second Mr. White's motion? Mr. Grippel, all those in favor of adjournment, it's unanimous, we are adjourned, thank you for attending the meeting this evening.